We're waiting for the Clerk of Council, then we would get started. Mr. Stevenson, would you check and see if, Mr. Camus? Ladies and gentlemen, before we get started with our approval of the agenda, I would like to introduce to you our new Administrator, Mr. Biggs Carpenter. Mr. Biggs, Mr. Carpenter started with us on last week, and Mr. Carpenter, it's a pleasure to have you with us, and I understand you're going to say something during Administrator time, but thank you for being our new Administrator. At this time, I'd like to get our approval for the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? Let the record show seven zero. Our invocation will be from our Vice Chair, Mr. Bale.
Let us pray. Dear Father God, before we start this meeting, we want to begin with Thanksgiving. During this meeting, we will discuss many things and make many decisions, but we never want to lose sight of our gratefulness to you. Thank you for your faithfulness and provisions in our lives. Thank you for each person in this meeting, and the uniqueness and the talents and perspectives they bring. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together and work towards a common goal. In everything, give thanks, as it says in Thessalonians 5:18. Give thanks in all circumstances, for this is the will of God in Christ Jesus for you. May our hearts be filled with gratitude as we start this meeting, and may it guide us throughout. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Bale. Now approval of the minutes.
So moved.
All right. Yes, Mr. Gobak.
Just one, one minor correction. In the minutes from the last regular meeting, under Section 6A, when Mr. Hensley was speaking, we refer to Lake Murray, and that's actually the other lake on the other side of Columbia. It should be Lake Watery.
Thank you for your... Okay. Are you prepared to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Poses? Okay, let the record show seven zero. Now we're down to a public presentation. Proclamation of recognizing the End the Weight Campaign Counsel on Aging. Ms. Robert.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas on March 22, 1972, President Nixon signed into a law, a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 to include a national public private nutrition program for individuals 60 years and older. For over five decades, this landmark law has supported our nation's seniors and helped to fund community-based organizations like Meals on Wheels, and it is still the only federal program designed specifically to meet the nutritional and social needs of older folks. The Meals on Wheels Program at the Fairfield County Council on Aging provides nutritious meals both to congregate and home-delivered seniors throughout Fairfield County that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby helping to prevent unnecessary falls and hospitalizations, and to provide necessary connections. Meals on Wheels Programs in Fairfield County, South Carolina have served our communities admirably for over 50 years. Volunteers are the backbone of Meals on Wheels Programs in Fairfield County, delivering nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation with care and concern and attention to their welfare. Meals on Wheels Programs here deserve recognition for the heroic contributions and essential services they provided amid the COVID-19 pandemic, inclement weather, and other emergencies. The senior population is substantially increasing, and action is needed now to support local Meals on Wheels Programs throughout federal, state, and local funding, volunteering, donations, and raising awareness to ensure these vital services can continue to be delivered for years to come. Nearly 13 million seniors are still threatened by or experience hunger. Fifty-six percent of seniors are lonely, and one in three Meals on Wheels Programs has a waitlist with seniors waiting on average four months for vital meals. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Chairman Clarence Gilbert, District 7, and the Fairfield County Council do hereby proclaim March 2025 as a month celebrating senior nutrition programs and the efforts of the End the Weight Program. We all urge citizens to take this month to honor our senior nutrition programs, the individuals they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. So order this 10th day of March 2025.
Next, moving on to Item B, the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer Update. We will have Mayor McMeekin. Counsel, I've asked the mayor to come and do that report over in case you may have some questions to ask him on that. Mayor?
It's working. There we go. Have a little more than three minutes tonight.
Two and a half.
This is the preliminary engineering report. It's online. If you want to go through it, a little light reading, but a lot of your questions could be answered in here. But I brought it here because I wanted to read one section out of it, which is the various options. So let you know, I've been on this thing since 2017, after I got elected into Town Council, and for it may, trying to get organized. Meeting up at Midlands Tech, so it's quite a few years of trying to compress into a few minutes there, and try not to put you to sleep, and not say things that I don't know what I'm talking about, because I'm not an engineer. But first of all, good evening, Counsel. Thank you for extending the request for me to appear before you, talk about the extremely important, but not the most exciting, subject of wastewater. I am currently the Mayor of Windsboro, and I serve as Chairman of the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System Commission. The Commission elected me as Chairman. Being Mayor does not automatically make me its Chairman. It's important to note that the name of the Commission is not the Fairfield County Commission, not the Town of Windsboro Commission, nor the Town of Ridgeway Commission. It is the Fairfield Joint Water Sewer and Sewer System Commission, which includes equal representation of two Commissioners from the Fairfield County Council, two Commissioners from the Windsboro Town Council, two Commissioners from the Ridgeway Town Council, and one Fairfield County citizen. That's a total of seven Commissioners. We are dependent on each other, and a house divided cannot stand. I want just to offer a brief history and the reason for the wastewater plant, Joint Water and Sewer System Commission, JWSSC. Like I say, it's been a long seven years with much turnover on the Commission due to election changes. Discussions on building a wastewater treatment plant began in 2017 at the Midlands Technical College Extension Conference Room here in Fairfield County. I was there as a newly-elected Windsboro Town Council member, and I sat in as a listener. I've been sort of in and out of it over the last year, depending on my position. At that time, the two nuclear generator plants in Jenkinsville were being built, and a stream of expected income from those plants made building a new wastewater treatment plant in Fairfield County realistic, or made it seem realistic. An attorney with experience with wastewater plants was hired in mid-2018 to organize the Joint Water Sewer Service Commission, and it was formally organized in 2019. Without a wastewater plant capable of handling enough treatment capacity, there would be little to no industrial and residential growth much beyond the limited capacity that the existing Town of Windsboro wastewater plant can provide. I'm going to give you some Fairfield County estimated population statistics over the years I could find. In 1974, the estimated population of Fairfield County was 19,900. By 2004, the estimated population of Fairfield County was 24,723, an increase of 4,273 people from 1974. In 2022, the estimated population of Fairfield County was 20,942, a decrease of 3,331 people from 2004. 2023, the estimated population of Fairfield County was 20,422. That's an estimated loss of another 520 people, an estimated loss of 3,851 people in Fairfield County from 2004 to 2023. This has been taking place while the state of South Carolina is one of the fastest-growing states in America. We have been going backwards while our state has been growing. There are other rural counties in South Carolina that have been declining in population, and for several of them, that trend is expected to continue. The tragedy here is that we are geographically located to be able to grow. Where several other rural counties in South Carolina whose population is decreasing are not geographically located in as enviable places as we are. Obviously, in towns and counties of declining populations, the cost of providing services such as county sheriff's vehicles, town public safety vehicles, EMS services, county and town fire protection, gas, electric, and water utilities, recreational facilities, animal shelters, and animal control, everything that counties and towns provide falls on fewer and fewer citizens. A race to the bottom is not a desirable goal. For Fairfield County, the Town of Windsboro, the Town of Ridgeway, and our western area of Fairfield County to survive and grow responsibly, we need a wastewater treatment plant capable of enabling treating a greater capacity of wastewater. Wherever the population declines, towns die. They become ghost towns, and no amount of paint, enthusiasm, and hope can significantly change that outcome. As is said, hope is not a plan. Without economic and population growth, you cannot have prosperity. It's that simple. Without more people and those people having access to higher-paying jobs, there is no higher standard of living. There are no new businesses or restaurants that our citizens want so badly without a growing population. Potential restaurants and businesses need an adequate customer base to survive or locate here. So, back to the preliminary engineering report. Like I say, it's online, and you can look up many of your possible questions and concerns. It is complex, and it is complicated. I do not have an engineering degree and cannot answer every question you might have. I want to read some of what is contained on page 51 of the P R regarding the various alternatives and options to building a wastewater treatment plant in Fairfield County. I suggest you do the same. Page 51, and you can start from there when you go home. The first option is the do-nothing plan. The do-nothing option. The alternatives to construction of a new wastewater treatment plant for Fairfield County include the do-nothing alternative. In this case, nothing will be done, and all wastewater treatment would be provided by the wastewater treatment plant in the Town of Windsboro and the Town of Ridgeway. The Ridgeway Plant has no available treatment capacity, and the Windsboro Wastewater Treatment Plant has only 500,000 gallons per day of treatment capacity available. This would severely restrict development in Fairfield County. Fairfield has already constructed several industrial parks that have sites available with more in the planning stage, any one of which could consume the available remaining wastewater treatment capacity and bring job growth in the county to a halt. In addition, new home and subdivision development would be limited to only those places where soils have sufficient to pass, or they have soils sufficient to pass percolation tests for installation of septic tanks. Given the economic devastation that will result for inaction, the do-nothing alternative is not a viable option. Hollywood, little city down below Charleston, they've run out of their sewer capacity. They're now putting in septic tanks. I had someone call me, wanted to see if they'd get money, if there was any help to put a septic tank, because they're so expensive to put in. The South Carolina Infrastructure Authority conditionally awarded $1,385 million for water and sewer improvements across South Carolina in 2023. The largest grant amounts awarded were in $10,000 increments. Many awards were less. The Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System Commission received a conditional skip grant of $10 million to help build a wastewater connector line from Fairfield County's industrial park across Peach Road, then down 321 to the Town of Windsboro's Jackson Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, which again has about 500,000 gallons of excess treatment capacity. It was named the Windsboro Connector Line. The Town of Windsboro also received a skip grant of $10 million to make improvements to its existing water plant to be able to provide more water processing for industrial and residential growth. The two grants have a common purpose: to stimulate growth and prosperity across our county and towns. What the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority wants to see evidence of is regionalization. Regionalization means cooperation between different governmental bodies, so all will benefit. Therefore, the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System Commission is composed of members from Fairfield County Council, Town Council of Windsboro, Town Council of Ridgeway, and that resident citizen. We are fortunate that our resident citizen commission is an engineer in this field. The South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority placed special timeline deadlines on the $10 million skip grant award to the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System because of the past contentious nature and actions they observe between the existing governmental bodies here. Particular South Carolina state officials watch us carefully. They read the papers. They watch the news. They keep up with social media, and they watch videos produced. I'm going to digress here a minute. When I was growing up, as always, Windsboro couldn't trust Ridgeway. Ridgeway couldn't trust Windsboro. Windsboro couldn't trust Fairfield County Council. County Council couldn't trust Windsboro. That can't work. I gave my word to the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority that I would do everything to the best of my ability to satisfy their requirements to keep this project moving forward. If their requirements were not met, they had the ability to acquire the grant money be returned. I accepted that responsibility. There are some places across the state where they're not going to make it, and that money's going to go back. The Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System Commission had to agree it would pursue a wastewater treatment plant as a condition to receiving that skip grant. Then Fairfield County and the Town of Windsboro had to craft a satisfactory intergovernmental agreement to establish a special purpose district for a new wastewater treatment plant, which would be a new and separate entity. This was a requirement of the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority. I say, Mr. Morgan over there, this took an enormous amount of time to carefully negotiate an intergovernmental agreement to protect the sewer and water rights of Fairfield County, the Town of Windsboro, the Town of Ridgeway, Mid-County Water, as well as this special new purpose district, a special purpose district where the new wastewater treatment plant would be located. The construction of a wastewater treatment plant is more than financial cost considerations and obstacles. It also has political considerations and obstacles to any location and completion. But it also has gathering political support, which should translate into financial support. Although the two nuclear plants to be constructed at Jenkinsville ended in a financial debacle to the state of South Carolina and Fairfield County, Fairfield County and the towns of Windsboro and Ridgeway have been thrown a new lifeline with the location and construction of the new Scout Automotive Plant just across our southern county line. The state of South Carolina wants us to succeed. It will take the financial support of the state of South Carolina to build a new wastewater plant. Financial support, I believe we have a high probability of receiving, as long as we continue to demonstrate regionalization or cooperation among our as long as we continue to demonstrate regionalization or cooperation among ourselves. The Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer Commission met all the conditions established by the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority at the end of December two thousand twenty-four. We received approval to begin again what is termed the Windsboro Connector Line. On Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, at the pre-construction hearing held in Windsboro, the engineers, contractors, and I signed contracts to break ground for this wastewater line from the industrial park to the town of Windsboro's Jackson Creek wastewater plant and its fifth five hundred thousand gallons of extra wastewater capacity. The connector line is required to be completed by June of two thousand twenty-six. Construction has begun. While this line is largely funded by the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority skip grant, Fairfield County has also contributed to its construction from the Dominion Scanifin Financial Legal Award settlement, plus those funds paid to extend the line, plus funds paid to extend the line eastward towards I seventy-seven by the county. We are halfway there. It's just halfway. There are still diplomatic negotiations ahead with other political bodies outside Fairfield County to craft satisfactory amendments to the existing two-eight wastewater water quality management plan for permission for the successful construction of a new wastewater treatment plant. The satisfactory two-eight amendment will have to be approved by E-PAC, which is the Environmental Protection Advisory Committee, Central Midlands Council of Governments, and D E S, or the body that was a component of D H E C, to complete the process to be awarded a federal E P D E S permit to discharge clean effluent into a body of water. We are members of the Central Midlands Council of Governments, which includes Richland County, Lexington County, Newbury County, of course Fairfield County, and all the cities and towns in the four county area. Currently, I believe the political winds favor us. But we have been to the goal line before, only to stumble and be penalized back to the twenty-yard line. Being penalized back to the twenty-yard line simply means more years ahead to any completion of a wastewater treatment plant. I repeat, without economic growth, there is no prosperity. When the new wastewater treatment plant is built, the flow of wastewater from the industrial park to the Jackson Creek-Windsboro wastewater plant will be reversed to the new wastewater treatment plant, so its operation will be as smoothly and as efficiently as possible. In conclusion, wherever my life takes me, I'm proud to have played a part in hopefully moving our county and our towns toward a brighter future. Thank you very much.
Any questions, council? Oh, I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. McMeagan, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
The document was submitted to D H E C, now D E S, some months ago. Was that a preliminary engineering report?
Yeah, you're talking about the, yeah.
So what's the outcome of their review? What are the potential outcomes from their review, and when do we expect it?
Yeah, I can't tell you everything I know or everything that is potentially possible, that sort of thing. I'm chairman of E-PAC, and so I get to watch what other people do and whatever comes to that. As far as you go into a two-eight amendment and that sort of thing, you can go for E-PAC twice. I'll accuse myself when I go there. It's got to go to E-PAC first. And you're going to deal with a lot of engineers and political elected officials, and you will deal with river keepers, and if they have to go for them, they'll look at probably twice. Then we'll go to Central Midlands Council, Executive Council. I'm on that, but I have to recuse myself from that. And then we'll go to D E S, and that's going to be the process it goes through. And they will go through it with a fine-tooth comb. You've got to have your act together when you go for them.
Mr. McMeagan, how far, you said, was it going to start at Peach Road and come up?
Or it's going to... Go across, go across. Did I say come, go across and then come down three twenty-one?
Right, so it's starting at Peach Road?
Right, at the industrial park, you go across and then come down south.
How far have they gotten? You said they were working on it.
They just started. You've got four sections to be completed. We have three different companies working on it, one's working on two sections. And I think we're going to have a little groundbreaking for all of you to come out and celebrate that it's going. But they have started working on it, and we've received pretty quick clearance to get going on things because I think the state wants this done. That Scout plant has changed everything. They want to see it completed. They are for us right now.
Mr. McMeagan, I'm sorry, Chair. Mr. McMeagan and the rest of the council, I will say that if you turn off of three twenty-one on the Peach, about a mile up on the left, they have already started a pump station on the left.
That part, yeah.
Already cleared the land and already started the process of building a pump station.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. And my phone number is in the phone book, it's on the town website. Give me a call, okay? Thank you very much. I appreciate your attention.
Now we're down to item seven, public comment session. Dr. Roberts?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Angie Connor Brewer.
Good evening, council members, and welcome to Fairfield County Administrator Carpenter. We're glad to have you here. My name is Angie Connor Brewer, and I am the executive director of the Fairfield County Council on Aging. I want to thank you all for recognizing the importance of the senior nutrition programs provided through the council on aging. We have the honor of providing meals on wheels to two hundred and twenty seniors in Fairfield County and also serving another sixty seniors throughout the week at our senior center and our lunch bunch programs. Your support, along with that of the community, are what keeps our programs going in good times and in bad. Funding uncertainty at the national level has been in the news a lot these last few weeks. No one is sure what is going to happen, but with approximately seventy percent of FCCO A's funding coming from federal and state dollars, you can be sure that what goes on up there is definitely going to affect what's happening here. The In the Wake campaign launched by Meals on Wheels America is designed to shed light on a subject that seniors are all too familiar with: waiting. Waiting for an appointment, waiting on a phone call, waiting on a visit from a family member or a friend, and yes, even waiting on a meal. We have been fortunate over the years to not have a waiting list in place for our meals. We took great pride that we could provide a meal to someone in need within a couple of days of their request so that the seniors didn't have to wait, but those days are coming to an end. Funding is harder and harder to come by, and the costs are rising every day. With the aging population growing so rapidly and the number of seniors in the nation expected to outnumber the number of children by the year twenty thirty, waiting lists are a reality. But they shouldn't be. No one should have to wait for a meal. So while the nation waits to see what will happen in Washington, the almost three hundred seniors that rely on FCCO A's nutrition programs will also wait. The seniors at the senior center will wait to see if lunch will continue to be available to all that are over the age of sixty. While the seniors getting meals on wheels will wait to see if that smiling volunteer will continue to knock at their door. Community programs like ours are vital to the county. It is not only meals and the other services that make an impact. It's also an opportunity to get citizens involved and engaged through social programs and volunteer opportunities. As my daughter was growing up, and even still today, she would call me and she's unsure about what she's doing and she wants to try something new, and I always tell her, I say, "If you're not going to do it, then who is?" The same concept applies to all of us. Council's continued support now, more than ever, is critical to the survival of the nutrition programs in Fairfield County. If the support's not from you, then who's it from? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Eddie Brownham.
Eddie Brownham, District Two. I just wanted to comment about the committee selections and what was in the voice over the weekend. And with District One and District Seven complaining that the paper didn't report the changes. But the thing about it is, the changes haven't been made yet according to the rules of the council. You have to all vote on the changes according to those rules, and none of that has been done. And I think that you need to voice newspaper an apology because it hadn't been changed. And I think in District Three, if she doesn't get put on something legally, you know, properly, those people ought to come around and see about it because they won't be represented on anything in the county. And I think that the council needs to do better than what they're doing now. Thank you.
James Muma.
Good evening, council. My name's James Muma. To give you a face with a name, you all were kind enough to put me on your Aaron Ochs Commission last year. And that's an issue close to my heart. Back in October before, with the previous council, we submitted a nominee. We have issues trying to get quorums for some of our meetings. And I just want to find out where we are on trying to get a nominee from October, either approved or disapproved, so we can move on and then fill out our committee. So I just want to bring that to your all's attention, and hopefully we can get some progress done so that we can get the county's business done. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
All right, now we're down to item eight, public hearing, none. Item nine, ordinance resolution and orders. Item A is first reading by title only, ordinance number eight forty-two. Dr. Roberts?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. An ordinance of the county council for Fairfield County authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Project Red to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits, authorizing the execution and delivery of a purchase and sale agreement by and between Fairfield County and Project Red and other related matters.
Okay, council, this is title only. There's no discussion. Are you prepared to vote?
Same.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Opposing? The director chose seven zero. Next, item B, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero two. Dr. Roberts?
A resolution of Fairfield County Council amending the organizational rules and bylaws of Fairfield County Council.
All right, council, you heard. Is there a motion? Mr. Goldbach? You got to make a motion first. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Okay, over for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank you for putting this on the agenda. And I think the citizens who spoke at the last meeting and the ones who reached out to us individually really appreciate that, putting this on the agenda, so thank you. I just wanted to repeat some of what I said at the last meeting to explain my reasoning and rationale for the suggested changes to the bylaws. There were two major changes, not a major, two primary changes. One, regarding each council member being on two committees. The reason for that is really so that all the seven districts and all the citizens within those districts would have some representation on the committees. And it also kind of spreads out the workload among the seven of us, doesn't concentrate it within, you know, number three or four of us. And also, just the math conveniently works out. There's five committees, three members each, fifteen total members, so each of us can be on two, and one of us probably has to be on three of them. The second recommended change was to the bylaws was regarding the council chair and vice chair not being appointed as chair to any committee. And this had nothing to do with personal, anything personal. It was just purely, and it's not trying to limit the authority of the chair or the vice chair whatsoever. It's really, again, about spreading the workload among the seven of us and giving us the opportunity, each district, to be represented on these committees. And again, make sure that all the citizens within our county are represented. And also, I think it gives each council member a chance to experience being a chairman, being a chairperson, which, again, would spread the workload. So that's really, I just wanted to repeat some of what I said last time before we vote. Thank you.
I wanted to make an amended motion. I wanted to make an amended motion, but I wanted Mr. Goldbach to have his chance to explain his reason for the resolution. I'm aware that the resolution, if it doesn't pass, it also takes away the language concerning the pledge of allegiance that we do. So I would make an amended motion to say that resolution go forward with the language that we put in the bylaws concerning the pledge of allegiance, but we remove and don't do any changes to the bylaws of Fairfield County Council, if I can get a second.
Okay, it's been a motion and second to amend the original motion. Are you prepared to vote?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ruth? Mr. Goldbach?
There we go. I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, yeah, I'd just like to comment on this. I really see the value in having it spread, as Mr. Goldbach said, to where all council members are involved, and I do believe that. My problem is, I really don't want to see it mandated. I would rather us see this, and I know that the chairman, after the initial appointments, made some changes, and the way I've been understood, that those changes could be made by him because there were no meetings held that he could, if I'm not, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ruth, as I understood and we discussed at the last meeting, the changes were made in accordance with the fact that members resigned, so they weren't removed for cause. They had, members of council had resigned themselves from the committee, and therefore the committees had not, number one, didn't have the requisite representation requirement of three members, and number two, they had not even had a chance to take their seat. So at that point in time, pursuant to the bylaws, it was still within the chair's purview to fill those positions because they had never actually been sat by virtue of the resignations.
So I really hope that we can, we have a new administrator. I hope that, and I really do realize and understand the purpose of this amending bylaws, as Mr. Goldbach presented. I hope that we could do this without this being mandated, that we can all come together, see our differences, work it out, and hopefully can make some more changes. He made, the chairman made a few. I would just rather see this done without mandate, and so I hope we can do it that way. Thank you.
Let me make sure everybody understands. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero two would go forward with the language for the pledge of allegiance, but would remove any changes to the bylaws of Fairfield County.
Anyone else? You heard the amended motion. Are you prepared to vote? All in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Opposing? The director chose five two. Mr. Roberts, the standing committees are on the website at the present time. The changes are on that, right? Okay, all right, thank you. Item C, resolution for... Mr.?
You just approved the amendment to the motion, haven't approved the...
At this time, it would be appropriate for a motion to be made that approves the resolution as amended.
All right, we need a motion to, the amended motion. I make a, I make a motion that the amended motion be approved. Okay, all right. Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposing? Opposes? Let the record show five two. Thank y'all for that. Okay, resolution number twenty twenty-five oh three. Dr. Roberts?
A resolution of Fairfield County Council committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement between Fairfield County and Project Red, identifying the project and other matters related thereto.
So moved. I'm sorry.
Okay, so my motion is second. Mr. Carpenter, would you care to, um, attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of council, what you have before you this evening with resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash zero three is a standard resolution, what's known as an inducement resolution in the economic development realm in South Carolina. This is required by law for councils to enter in and approve a resolution, which basically says that they are going to negotiate and work with the potential project, in this instance, what is known as Project Red, to go forward with creating a fee in lieu of tax agreement and other economic incentives. For purposes of, of this resolution, the, the company cannot be named at this time. It's part of the South Carolina laws, also included in the Freedom of Information Act. But the county can point out that is an anticipated investment of approximately thirteen point seven million dollars in taxable real personal property and the creation of approximately seventy-five full-time, new full-time positions. So that's what this resolution of council is doing, is basically agreeing to enter into negotiations with the new economic development project.
Any question? Are you prepared, prepared, prepared to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposes? Let the record show seven zero. Item ten, board and commission minutes, none. Item eleven, board commission appointments. A, planning commission, Ms. Donna Miller, District Seven. Disability and special needs, Ms. Virginia Smith from District Two. Disability and special needs, Joyce Turner from District Three. Disability and special need, Barbara Glenn from District Four. District need, disability and special needs, Ms. Bidesha Hall from District Five. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, then vote.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think given that the, the positions that they're being appointed to and the fact that council has previously in the past gone through and voted individually as relates to each person.
Okay.
I think it would be best if you take a motion for each person.
All right.
So that way, it, it clarifies the, the council's vote as relates to each candidate.
All right, thanks for the correction. Okay, planning commission, Ms. Donna Miller, District Seven, can I get a vote?
Second.
Okay, but mo, um, motion is second, are there comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? Ms. Donna Miller, seven zero. Disability and special need, Ms. Virginia Smith, District Two.
So moved.
Okay, been motioned in second, all in favor? Opposes? Seven zero. Joyce Turner, District Three. Okay, motion is second, all in favor? Opposes? Okay, seven zero. Ms. Barbara Glenn, District Four, motion?
Second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor? Nades, seven zero. And Ms. Bidesha Hall, District Five.
So moved.
All right, motion, uh, in second, all in favor? Opposes? Okay, seven zero. Okay, thank you. And item F, animal control ad hoc committee, Mr. Polly?
Can I get that? The ad hoc committee thing that I signed?
Chairman and members of council, back on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, at four P. M., we held the Public Services and Development Committee concerning forming a ad hoc committee for animal control. Back in two thousand and twenty-four, Mr. Ruth approached me when I was chairman about forming a ad hoc committee. He thought it would be a good idea to get this started. There was nothing in the bylaws that stated we had to have one and there was nothing that stated we couldn't have one. But on request of Mr. Ruth, we did seek out to find some individuals who wanted to serve on an ad hoc committee. Each council member was able to submit names prior to Thursday, February the twenty-seventh, to Ms. Roberts on different individuals they would like to have on the committee. These members did not have to be from their district, they could be from any district within the county. And on the twenty-seventh of February, myself, Mr. Vice Chair Bell, and Mr. Jackson came up with seven names that we would like to present to council to vote on, to form an ad hoc committee. Those names are Laura Thomas, Katie Odom, Liz Bankhead, Amy Griffith, Ann Carrero, Dr. Roger Getty, and Jerome Armstrong. Each council member has been provided a animal control advisory ad hoc committee, and it states their mission and purpose, composition, organization, and the sunset on how many days they will have to complete its review of our animal control ordinance. I would like for these seven names to be voted on by council to move forward. Mr. Chair?
All right, we will vote on these names individually. First name is Ms. Laura Thomas.
Other question? Procedurally, I'm not sure how to handle this, but I would like to explain something and then make a motion to add two names to this list. So do I do that now or wait until we go through these seven?
Mr. Goldbach, I think at this time, if you're wishing to add any names to the list, I think it'd probably be best to put it out there now so that way council can have a full slate of candidates. And again, it would be a situation wherein you would make a motion to add that name to the list and then it would require a vote and approval of council's, of affirmative vote to say that that person's name would actually be added at that point.
Right, thank you. That's, that makes sense. So let me start with the composition of the committee. It shall consist of seven members, and this is from the document that Mr. Polly just referred to. The committee shall consist of seven members appointed by county council. Representation on the committee shall include animal welfare organizations, recognized and licensed animal breeders, the hunting community, and the general public. So I want to touch on the animal welfare organizations. Now, I don't know each of these seven folks and I don't know how much they represent animal welfare organizations, but there are two individuals who have spoken here in public many times and who have spent many hours volunteering for animal welfare and animal care. And those are Kathy Falk and Boo Major. I think that their participation on this ad hoc committee would be very valuable and maybe even needed for this mission and vision to be achieved by this ad hoc committee. I've received about a dozen texts and emails from people supporting them. They were actually both, there was a motion to add them at the Public Service Committee, but they weren't seconded, so they weren't voted on. So I would like to make a motion that we increase the number of members, which I don't think is written in granted, it is in the guidelines, but it's not anything that's in a bylaw, as Mr. Polly said, or in our, in our rules. I'd like to increase the number of members from seven to nine and add Kathy Falk. And I'm making a motion to do this, add Kathy Falk and Boo Major to that list.
I second.
Okay, it's been motioned in second that Ms. Kathy Falk and Ms. Boo Major be added to the list. Are you prepared to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes?
Nay.
Let the vote for seven nades. Okay, Ms. Laura Thomas?
Yea.
Second.
Um, sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? Seven zero?
Mr. Bell's abstaining.
I abstain.
Abstain, okay, six one. Well, Ms. Bell abstaining. Ms. Kathy Odom?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes?
I abstain.
I abstain also.
Okay, let that be what, five seven?
Five two.
And I would like to abstain to the first vote too, I just didn't speak up, so I didn't have a chance, I was watching what was happening over here. So if we could change that, please.
Okay.
On the first vote, on Laura Thomas.
Okay, Ms. Liz Bankhead?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Five two. Ms. Amy Griffith?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five two. Ann Carrero?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Okay, five two. Hmm? Roger Getty?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor? Oppose? Did anyone swan to nay? Okay, okay, six one. Okay, Jerome Armstrong?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor? Opposes? Any nades? One, six one. All right. Down to the old business, uh, none. New business, none. County Administrator report, Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, citizens of Fairfield, thank you for the warm welcome I've been given. I ask the chairman for a few minutes just to introduce myself to this community. My name is Vic Carpenter and I was born and raised in South Carolina, town of Somerville, grew up there, went to the University of South Carolina, graduated from there, and immediately went to work for my first career, which is working for the Boy Scouts of America. I spent about thirteen years as a scout executive in Florida, Georgia, and South Carolina. At that point, my wife and I had three small children in diapers and decided it was time to settle down. So I went to, went to work for Anderson County as their solid waste manager. So I got my career starting garbage and I got a lot of it. It grew from garbage to sewer, to storm water, to the animal shelter, to basically anything that smelled bad was under my watch in Anderson County. So when we talk of animals, I have, I have shoveled the you-know-what in, in ice storms to clean it because it's got to get done. I had the privilege then to serve Greenwood County as the county manager. Served as an interim for Abbeville before coming to Kershaw, where I served eleven years in Kershaw County. God then spoke to me and I moved to Virginia, where I spent the last three years as the county administrator in Gushland County, Virginia, before once again, he made it clear that it was time to come home. And here I am. I have shared with the council, as I've interviewed with them, my commitment to a few things. Number one is honesty, number two is transparency. I will not always tell an answer people want to hear, but I will tell them an answer that is truthful, answer that is honest. I will give the best advice that I can, I will listen. I look forward to working with our citizens and our council members to understand ways that I can help this county achieve and accomplish. As I told the council, one of the things that has always struck me is Fairfield County's opportunity and potential. The mayor spoke very eloquently to this county and what it has the ability to be. I would not be here today if I did not believe that to be the case as well. So, Mr. Chairman, members of council, I thank you for this opportunity you've given me and I look forward to many years of opportunity working to make this county the greatest county of South Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clerk of Court report, none. It's council time. Anyone wish to speak?
Yeah, I just want to welcome Mr. Carpenter too and just thank you for being here and thank, also, Mr. King's not here, but he had a big part in this and, and going through a lot of candidates and it all came down to you and it was unanimous and, and from all accounts, you're, I mean, you're a home run hire, I do believe, and I've heard from people in multiple surrounding counties, very good, nothing but good about this and hopefully you're going to be with us a long time and can unite us all, the, the council, the citizens and everybody, and I, I know you're going to do a great job and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I did.
Oh, Ms. Goldbach. Ms. Flairn, you?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would second what Mr. Ruth said, except I would say it's a grand slam, not just a home run. I've had just a few brief interactions with Mr. Carpenter so far and I'm very impressed and I really appreciate you being here, Mr. Carpenter, and really look forward to working with you. I think we, we have a great opportunity here with this county and with all the growth happening in South Carolina and happening around us, you know, to the south of us, to the north of us. We're in a beautiful position to really tap into some of that growth and I think you and us working together can really do some great things here, so thank you for being here. I'd just like to mention two other quick things. Mr. Bright, a few meetings ago, mentioned the comprehensive plan on the website was still in draft form. Thanks to Ms. Roberts, she tracked down the, the reality and it was actually on the community development page as the final draft, but it's since been added to the county council department page as final draft. So the final twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan is in on the website. Last thing, last Monday, for a few hours, I shadowed one of the employees at the animal shelter and I have to say that I really, really appreciate Joe Shaw and those folks, what they do there. They're in a tough situation, the animals are in a tough situation, but they do an incredible job working, working there and I really appreciate what they do. I know we're in, you know, the beginning of budget planning season and I know we've got many needs across this county. Our fire, our e, emergency management, medical response, and our sheriff's office need vehicles, many other departments need things, but at some point, we're going to have to really deal, my opinion is, we need to deal with this animal shelter. And I hope that we can find some funding, funding this year to make things better at the existing shelter, but I would like to see us come to an agreement that we will find a way to get a plan in place, you know, I think Mr. McMeek and Mayor McMeekin said hope is not a plan, but we need a real plan to actually build a new shelter for these, these folks and somehow we're going to have to find a way to fund that. It's not going to happen in the next year or two, I doubt, but we, I, I would like to see us put a plan together and help these people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, this end of wait campaign, we are, you know, like tooting a horn, so to speak, about feeding the elderly. If you remember correctly, Ms. Angie, I talked with her and they, the end of, the, wasn't going to go through the end of June, the weekend program for the shut-ins that were there. She needed money for a hundred and forty. She and I got together, we got some individual donations, we sent out emails to companies and she told me today that she finally ended up with thirty thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars from individuals and companies and this is keeping seventy, they're keeping half of our elderly fed. It's a shame that Fairfield County cannot feed the elderly at home. That's pathetic when we have got that many elderly, that many elderly that need food on the weekends. That, I, I don't know how many are fed during the week, I don't remember that number, but that's just, and the seventy was the ones that were the most vulnerable, that could not open a can, do not have family close by. So we were able to keep seventy of them, you know, some food going, which is, I'm so very thankful for the individuals that stepped up, the companies that stepped up, and this is an ongoing thing, but I wish that council would have added some more, more to it, and I think I suggested that, but of course, that didn't go. more, more to it, and I think I suggested that, but of course, that didn't go anywhere. But Angie, thank you so very much for that. And the other thing that I would like to, um, address is the fact that, and I'm talking all of council, Mr. Chairman, all of you, uh, a church member, one of our church members burned up in a fire, I believe it was this, this Wednesday coming, two weeks ago, five miles up the road from me, and, uh, his, um, shed caught on fire, and he, when they found him, he was in the shed, and he had burned up. And I've been told, you know, that, you know, if you live in the country, you know, your house is going to burn up if it catches on fire. Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not satisfied with that. I'm not satisfied with that at all, because I'm going to tell you, not everybody lives in town, because if everybody lived in town, you wouldn't have any corn, you wouldn't have any sour beans. Farmers live in the country, dairy farmers live in the country, chicken farmers live in the country, hog farmers live in the country, and turkey farmers live in the country. So if everybody that lived in the country lived in town, so the house wouldn't burn up, well, then you wouldn't be eating anything, and you wouldn't need to go to the grocery store, okay? So I, I, let's not punish those of us who want to live in the country, who have to live in the country for their business or whatever, okay? I just urge council to, when we start with our budget, to let's put fire, EMS, our police, our detention center, let's put them first on the list, and let's see, can we not turn this county around, so people not going to die before the EMS can get there, the house is not going to burn up, the poor man burnt up in the building. So, and, and he was one of our church members, a dear friend, so that really hit home, and I do know that we, as a county, can do better. I just, I, council, I'm talking all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I just want to thank all the, um, individuals that volunteered to be on the committee. Unfortunately, we, you know, we, we can only have seven, and, and that's the seven that we pick, so I want to thank everybody for volunteering. Recognize the individuals that's here tonight. Ms. Amy Griffith, thank you for volunteering to be on the committee. Ms. Laura Thomas, thank you for being here, and Ms. uh, Bankhead, thank you for being here as well. Did I miss anybody else? Thank you all for volunteering to be on this committee.
Some may say that I'm not smart enough to, uh, write this, but, uh, I can assure you, that's on you. And yes, I've seen the papers, and it's heated attempt to defend itself. Yes, I'm in the hot seat now because we have seen this happen to every person who sit as chairman, but it's twofold. If we have those that leak inaccurate listing and information, hoping to get something or anything, they won't do public shaming, well, shame on them. Unfortunately, the world we live in, and I'm not running for popularity, running a popularity contest, I'm hoping to improve this county and to do my job. Imagine ti, the times we could use towards working instead of constantly inviting in the public eye, how unprofessional and childish. Imagine if your local paper asked about the good we are doing, how could we turn the county around without all the drama and hot button? But realize, I take the heat, but I am not the source of it. I hold myself to a higher standard. Now for what should be reported, over the last two weeks, I have had plenty of time to reflect and prepare what I'm about to say. Yes, I prepare. It has been my desire to provide all of you with the full and transparent and appropriate on a professional level. My goal, and I'm sure the goals of everyone that's sitting here at this table, is to keep moving forward and trusting in our mission to unite. The outside information the citizen receives should be honest and accurate, and no room for interference with our work. Effort and petty gains played on the outside source to stir up controversy for whatever gains are, are accolades they may receive. We are all adults and concerned members of our citizen. Let's celebrate our good works thus far, settlement of the IRS problem, thanks to the hard work of our county, hiring a ex, a temporary man as a position, as administrator, joint water ventures with Town of Windsboro with the connector line, construction of a pump station on Peach Road, conversation with developer of our possible housing project. We have met with state officials and have obtained a commitment to work with state officials in ensuring growth in our county. Now, this is important. Put your paper aside and communicate directly with me if you need information or explanation. It makes it hard on the county to entice investors and retain employees when the public reads our local paper. Please contact your local paper and ask them for more positive, positivity to help heal our county. Let's celebrate our county and keep moving forward with the benefits all. Let's work together and not against each other. This is not about looking big and important, it's about what's best Fairfield County. I will not follow with, follow up with negative anties and foolishness. I will work and respect anyone that will work and respect me. This is a two-way street. I leave you with this about, there is profit in hard work, but there is mere talk that leads to poverty. Proverbs force twenty-seven. There's no executive session. Item eighteen, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show s-